Welcome one and all to the ordinary meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee of Ramsgate Town Council. Let's start by asking if we have any apologies.
We have apologies from Councillor Driver due to a personal commitment.
Second item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Do we have any councillors that wish to make a declaration of interest? Nope. Item three is previous minutes. To approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Finance and General Purposes Committee, held on the 9th of July 2025, as a true record. Can I have a proposal, please? councillor Hetherington?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favour? Thank you, let's carry it. Item four on the agenda is accounts and budgets. This is in three parts. The first part is to receive and note the receipts and payments up to the 30th of September 2025, and the general reserves report up to the 30th of September 2025.
Thank you Chair. So this is the first time receiving a report under the new accounting system. And one of the things I'm actually, I'm particularly quite liking is the presentation of the accounts in, these are called T-accounts, where you've got the receipts on one side and the payments on the other side, which is a common, a standard layout in private book, it's classic bookkeeping. And most of the, most of our budgets are paid for from the precept. We're not looking for things to balance. But actually, there are certain budgets, like allotments or the properties, where I think actually starting to look at this information in terms of, well, what is the true cost is going to be really interesting. Obviously, if members have any questions about specific sums, please do let me know.
We're about halfway through the council financial year. I always look at these to see whether there's any items that are more than expected or less than expected, and I can't really see any at the moment, so I think we're fine.
It's certainly council halfway through the year, the allotments budgeted and actual. Is there any more that they pay for?
Yeah, we've only just started when the bills are.
So Chair's quite right, that actually the money's coming in now. And it's one of the things that does look a bit confusing is that there's certain things within the accounts that we will pay 100% at some point in the year. Other things might be paid spread equally across the months, which is why the net position is, really looks quite all over the place, but isn't a problem.
I just think it's very well laid out. I do like the presentation of it. It's easy, it's easy to look at, it's easy to reference to, and I think it's great.
So what we need to do is approve or what? To receive and note, so we're noting. The other part of it is the reserves, which is on the first sheet of this report. You'll see that we're carrying quite a lot of money in our reserves. More than perhaps we could really defend. Particularly if the Radford House development reserve, if we don't need all that money for Radford House under the new plans. I think we need to address that, certainly in the new financial year, if not in this one. Any comments?
Yeah, Chair, I think you're absolutely right. And I think we need to get Radford House sorted and know what we're actually spending on it. And then we'll know, obviously, after that, how much money that we have left within it. And do we need it? Are we going to continue with keep some, spread others? You know, so I think that's absolutely right.
Yes.
Considerably, this is our money when we go to unitary party, maybe someone trying to take away from us.
No.
You are ununitarised.
I think we're invisible to government. So we note the reserve balance.
Yeah.
4.2 is to receive a written report from the town clerk. We consider the varmints contained therein for recommendation to the council.
Thank you Chair. So varmints need to be approved by full council. Tonight is to consider some suggestions that are on my mind. The first is the balance carried forward. And when drafting the budget, I always try to underestimate how many, how much funds we will have. And we've actually had, we started this financial year with 85,301 pounds more than we were expecting. So thinking about where this could go, I've suggested general funds, but members can make alternative suggestions.
Do you want to take them in turn?
Up to you Trev, there's quite a lot to go through, so whichever you prefer.
No, let's go through them and then we'll come back.
The precept was 512 pounds higher. This was just due to the pounds and pennies of how TDC actually works out the calculation. We have disposal proceeds. This is where the technicians are very good at actually getting rid of older equipment and plants machinery, only small items that are valued under 500 pounds. And there's been 1,140 pounds made on selling things this year. Radford House tenants and room hire, 5,500 pounds income that was not expected. Radford House rates were lower than expected. And then anchor funding for Ramsgate Carnival, 6,000 pounds. That money has been paid to Ramsgate Carnival, but actually it was paid in the last financial year. And it will fall, our accounts are based on an accrual process. So they will be included in our accounts. But in reality, it was last year's money that was used. So effectively, there is 6,000 pounds not in use this year. As a starting point, I suggested general reserves as a place where these funds could be put. Looking at the anchor funding for Ramsgate Carnival, there are a couple of overspends in town promotion, which I've suggested this money be used on other town promotion related budgets. Shall I go into the overspends as well?
Let's deal with the surpluses. An alternative proposal for the balance carried forward surplus, 85,000. That's rather than put it into general reserves, put it into the highways improvement plan. Because, and make an effort to actually get that, some of the items in that improvement plan done.
Yes.
Because they're usually about safety of residents. And I think we should be making an effort to actually get some of that work done.
Yes, very true.
That's good, sir.
Does that include calming of traffic?
I don't know off the top of my head what's in the highways improvement plan.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do, if you put in that money, we need to prioritise that money, Chair. Which is what we think are the most important, important parts for the town.
So I'm going to propose that. I seconded, all those in favour? Let's carry it. Councillor Shonk, you didn't vote. No, you're not on the committee. Sorry, you're not on the committee, sorry. My mistake, my mistake. Overspends.
Overspends. This is a new budget being requested, allotment administration. And previously, these costs have been in general administration. But I think actually starting to have some allotment specific expenses, like the allotment officers' mobile phone, postage, envelopes, stamps would be beneficial. Some requested 500 pounds to come from general reserves.
Yes, we should, because allotment budgets are supposed to balance, aren't they?
Custom house rates were a lot higher than expected. I mean, in last financial year, it was 3,700. This year, it was 4,600. So the budget of 4,000 pounds was insufficient. Some required 682 pounds, suggested from general reserves. Custom house repairs and maintenance. The scaffolding was up for an increased time, as there were more projects being added in, which included upgrades to the lightning protection system, roof repairs and fixing the vein. So you had the cost of those works, plus the cost of keeping scaffolding up longer. To bring the budget back into the black and have some available for anything else that comes up, including the reoccurring things like the lift maintenance contracts. I suggested 10,000 pounds, either from general reserves or the custom house sinking fund. The problem with the custom house sinking fund is that we've only had that budget for a short amount of time. And I'm suggesting using most of it already.
And we nearly sunk.
Well, which is it?
I'd say general reserves, we're trying to start.
I don't like the all there. Okay, general reserves.
Radford House Utilities. There's a problem with Radford House's electricity consumption, which appears to have shot up. A smart meter has just been installed and it is being investigated. We're checking what the tenants are using electricity on. But with the smart meter being installed, I don't know whether, have we been underpaying all this time? Or is there something with the smart meter that's amiss?
It's five or six times the amount that the custom house cost us. So there's something wrong.
That is an extraordinary difference.
Ecotricity. We have a broker who actually are very helpful. Communication directly with the supplier is quite hard work. But actually, our broker who manages our accounts is good.
Well, what I haven't been told yet, because I've raised it a couple of times now, is whether it's the actual consumption that's high, or whether it's the bills are wrong.
Or is there a problem? Has it been checked?
Well, that's what they're doing now, as we speak.
So in the bills, the cost per unit that they're using is correct. But it's whether the meter is correct.
And whether anybody's, sorry, whether there's anybody who's linking up to our electricity. I don't know, there's only cannabis factories about.
Or landcoats, that happened once.
Chair, can I just mention, we've got a smart meter at home, it's not that smart, it never works since we've had it.
Have you turned it on, Trevor?
No, Mum, that's fine.
Mine works perfectly, I have to say.
Radford House Repairs and Utilities. There's emergency repairs to the flat roof taking place due to water ingress. Improved emergency lighting over the fire escape. Plus the usual small repairs and maintenance still to come. Suggested increase 5,000 pounds from general reserve. Ramsgate Day is now a completed event and there was a 400 pound overspend due to additional security arrangements that were brought in, suggesting that this comes from the Ramsgate Carnival anchor funding. And then the town promotion general expenses. This has absorbed the cost of the Ramsgate Events Calendar. And it suggested that this budget be topped up by 3,000 pounds from the Ramsgate Carnival anchor funding.
What was the, what was the anchor funding meant for?
Yes, so the money has been received and the anchor funding for the carnival was to cover, basically, the paperwork side of it. So it went towards the event application.
But it's still there, because it was paid in the previous.
That's it.
Can I just ask a question? I think, the rate when, is that, does the shop, the restaurant pay a separate rate?
Yes.
So that still doesn't come into our?
No.
Okay, so we've been asked to recommend those varmints, overspends, et cetera, to council. I suppose. Councillor Hetherington, seconded, all those in favour? Thank you.
Can I just ask a question for your group? You're referring to the anchor funding for Ramsgate Carnival. Did we get the documentation from Miss Ramsgate as well?
I'm not sure. I know that the two lots of anchor funding, and I'm just wondering whether or not that came in, because that's going to be a part of our next decision making for the budget for next year. So just kind of fit it here, just been talking. I know the deputy town clerk has requested it, I'm not sure if it's.
I've got a feeling that the Ramsgate group haven't come in with the information that we conditioned as part of the agreement, that sort of. If they have, they have, I'm just not aware of it. So I'll have to check with Rebecca next week.
Item 4.3 is to receive a verbal update of preparations for the 2026-2027 budget.
Thank you Chair. Just to let you know that this year, the budget is going to be prepared within the new council software. And I started to think about the expenses that will possibly increase on a percentage basis. Things that will be, projects that are finished that can be taken out. Maybe anything new that I'm aware of to add in. But unfortunately, in October, it's a little bit difficult how far I could get with that. And I thought if I, I thought about sending it out just so you could start to see what the presentation is going to be like. But then I thought, no, I'm going to add confusion by sending out something that's only part done. But it will be starting shortly.
And those of you that are on other committees, need to start thinking now about what it's likely to be for next year. Item five then is Climate Change Task Group. To receive and note the Climate Change Task Group minutes from the 30th of July 2025. Long time ago, do you want to say anything?
I don't think so, I think it's fairly big. And obviously, we missed our meeting in September. So we are hoping to reschedule for October immediately before the council meeting.
What do we do? We note, we note the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item six then is grant procedure. Clarity on paid services. Receive a written report from the town clerk and consider the proposed amendments aimed at improving the transparency regarding paid services within funded events. Which is something we've discussed as a council before. Town clerk?
Thank you. So this report proposes updates to the council's grant funding documents to improve transparency where grant funds are used to pay for professional services. Concerns have been raised that current applications do not always make clear who is being paid for what or how fees are set, creating risks of hidden profits or conflict of interest. The proposed amendments to grant application form and funding criteria would require applicants to clearly declare any paid roles, professional goods or payments to individuals or organisations involved in delivering events. And these changes have been shared with the Grant Scrutiny Panel, who support the changes. And the aim is to ensure fairness, accountability and confidence in how grant funds are used.
Yeah, I'd just like to make it clear that we're not against paying people that have to put in a lot of work to get some of these events on, you know, going forward. It's just that we feel it should be clear, I'd say. Yes.
I just wanted to say, I think this is excellent, it's very clear. And it makes it very clear that it's not that we're saying people shouldn't be paid. We just need clarity and transparency about who's being paid, what, when.
Councillor Hetherington just said the word I was going to say, but it's clarity and that's it.
Councillor Hetherington?
Yeah, I think it helps us actually in making decisions on the grounds. Because we get a lot of applications and this sort of gives us far greater clarity about how we can make our decisions. And I think actually it's a helpful process for the applicants to be going through as well, because I think they can kind of think things out in stages. And that's quite useful.
Yes.
I think it's helpful, because the reality is that we pay so much for volunteers, volunteers can we put food on the table. Or sometimes, you know, we rely on volunteers to help organisations at quite a high professional level. And yet, we expect them to do it without paying. So I think, you know, there is a need to recognise that actually, when they're looking for funding, they're not always just looking for paying for food on the table in the event itself. But they actually need to live themselves. And if they can't, then some of these thoughts will fall. But I do think, as you said, we need the clarity to just proportionately what money is going to what part of their expenses. So thank you, I just wanted to add that.
And I think the procedure's very well.
Yes.
So I propose that we, do we have to inform council?
No, this committee has the power to implement this.
And I propose that we go forward with this. Seconded, councillor Hetherington, all those in favour? Carry it. Item seven, policy and procedure, civic and community award policy. To receive, consider and approve a draft civic and community award policy.
Thank you Chair. The Kent Deputy Lieutenant is encouraging the town council to make applications to the King's Award for Voluntary Service. And in order to rationalise who is going to be nominated, we have a policy in place for honorary freedom of the town. But this policy sets out how the council recognises individuals and groups. And it defines the levels of honours available, the criteria for each, and the nomination and approval process. So it adds in the King's Award for Voluntary Service, honorary freedom of the town, a Mayor's Award, and then the Community Champions Award, which we already work up with the Ramsgate Society. This is putting some rationale behind when the different awards are given.
Yeah, my concern was, what's the level? Which is the highest award, which is the next highest award? And are we, are there becoming, you know, more awards than there are? How we can differentiate between the different, yeah, different level of awards?
So the UK's highest recognition for voluntary groups would be the King's Award for Voluntary Service. And then the highest award that the town council can give is honorary freedom of the town. And then I would suggest that it would then be the Mayor's Award and the Community Champions Award.
So the King's Award for Voluntary Service, is that for groups then?
Yes.
Whereas the others are for individuals?
Yeah, I think, you know, very happy to support this policy. The only real comment I would make, well, two comments really, I think. If members of this council have any views as to what groups that they would like to follow for an award, then they should do so. The other thing, I just have a slight concern now, as you mentioned to the free man and free woman team of the town, as individuals. Because I think there are a hell of a lot of people who do a lot of work over the years and do it without recognition. I wouldn't know who those particular individuals are. Someone just said to me today about one lady who's for years has worked, worked at a church for years, you know, and struggling to walk and everything, but still goes and does a volunteer a bit. That's the type of people. But I think it's got to be absolutely exceptional to get the freedom of Ramsgate. You can't just recommend someone because they, you know them or something like that. It's got to be really, really, a lot of work that they've done to get that, to get that walk.
It looks like that, doesn't it? Because there's only four people that can hold it at any one time, according to this, isn't there? Or if I misread this?
Yes.
Yes, so that limits it in itself, doesn't it, to the?
Exactly, to the exception.
Yeah, I mean, sorry.
Thank you. The idea behind this was to try and come up for a plan so that there can be recognition for the individuals that the chair suggests, when possibly honorary freedom can't be given to all. It was intended to come up with what other options, we want to do something, but maybe honorary freedom isn't.
Yes. So that would be the idea mess.
I can't, obviously I've read it, but I can't recall. Is there a criteria to guide people as to what is an achievement that they can be recommended for? Because some would say, yeah, this person has worked really hard. They do a great job and they've been brilliant. It's got to be over and above, and I think that needs to be in policy deeds. It's not you doing a really good job, councillor's job, whatever. It's you.
it's not you doing a really good job, councillor's job whatever, it's you going over and above. And, you know, it's anybody going over and above what is expected. A volunteer is over and above because it's volunteer, it's not what is expected of them as part of a job. So I think a criteria in addition, just a little bit of a framework on there, just to guide people. And the mayor's award. You know, it's got to be clear that anybody could proper name and uh somebody forward for that award. It's not my choice, it's King's.
But they decide, so.
I can decide, but yeah, so when, so left to you.
Are you proposing that, councillor Hudson?
If it's not already, I'll say, I'm not quite sure, because I've whizzed through all the paperwork, I have read it, but I'm not quite sure whether that criteria is in there, if that makes sense.
So are you proposing it or is not?
Yes.
Yeah, so seconded.
Hmm.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to suggest if you had a sort of point system. So people could look at the different levels. And if that person qualified for that and that and that, then the points would add up too.
Oh, that's a bit too, that's it's too obvious, because you can't.
I think the rate, the rate.
Someone does that and you can't compare the, the two.
Exactly. Councillor Kurtin.
I suppose I was actually going to suggest something very similar to all those lines, that there should be I'm just thinking about when you're doing job applications or stuff like that, a s- kind of scoring system.
A weighting.
Yes, a kind of weighting system.
Yeah.
I, I think in particularly for, for, for the, the freedom of, of the, the town. Um, you know, is, is that possible? Um, and I, I get it, and I get the challenges that you're talking about, but, you know, we need we need some markers, I think, you know, not, I don't just mean this council, but going forwards, councillors going forwards are going to need some markers by which to measure, otherwise you can, you know,
Yeah.
you know, you've got five people in the room and ten opinions as to whether or not something is relevant or not, and and so that's why I'm, I don't know if some kind of.
Won't be ten in a room, it'll be three in a room.
I, I think.
Five people in the room, ten opinions.
No, I'm just saying. Um, there won't be five in a room.
Um.
What if we have a committee? No, I know, I, if you just, just, just.
We've strayed onto, we've strayed onto a second subject, well, let's deal with the, the.
In principle.
Let's deal with the amendment that's on the table first. Which is what councillor Hudson.
To criteria to guide. And I say broad criteria, I've sat on interviews and even a weighted system is subjective.
Hmm, no, I think.
Absolutely.
Councillor Hudson, I think your proposal was that.
Criteria, broad criteria.
No, it was.
Over and above.
That it needs to be over and above.
Yeah.
The, the norm.
Yeah.
So let's vote on that.
Happy with over and above.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's carry it. Now we're talking about whether we want written criteria. Um, councillor.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I think this process of um awarding um whether it's the King's Award or whatever it is um is very subjective. And I don't think that you can come up with any system that says give this person five points, this person four points. I really don't think you can do that, because at the end, at the end of the day, you're going to be looking at what people or a group have actually done. And, and can you say then this group has done better than this group? Um, how are you going to score that? I really can't see how you're going to do that. And at the end of the day, for me, as an individual, um it's going to come from here. It's going to come from the heart and it's going to come from the head about knowing what they've done and then whether that says Christ, they have gone over, over and above, and they've not just done it once, this has been, this has gone on for quite some time. And, and you'll probably have about four or five or six. And, and then you've got to pick one.
That is the nature of the King's Award, it is not.
Councillor.
Particular criteria, it is.
Councillor.
Yeah, I think it is subjective, you know, we've all, we've written about interviewing, all of us have done interview processes, it's very different thing when you're interviewing to a job description, et cetera, et cetera, and there's criteria and qualifications and all of this. This is far more generic and it's far more subjective. I don't think that sort of thing can be measured so easily. So, yeah, I'm not really for.
I'm with you.
I I would be hes- hesitant in trying to put criteria, I couldn't do couldn't, couldn't write the criteria in a satisfactory way. I think if somebody can or somebody can find, find somewhere else.
You're a better man than I am, Gump, didn't.
Find somewhere else where it's been done, I think we could then look at those, see if. Yes, councillor Mackinson.
You're volunteering to write the criteria.
I'm just saying that we've already given the freedom of the town to the RNOL. Now, that as an example. There'd be no, well, very little argument against those volunteers going out in all weathers, rescuing all different sorts of people at Ransgate. I don't think there would, uh, if that was the gold standard.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be a tough one, wouldn't it?
Certainly have to get a boat.
We gave, we gave it, who else have we given to? Ralph, didn't we?
Yeah, I might be long before my turn.
I was just going to say, we've, we've got, um, so one person has the freedom of the town going back several years, and I've got no idea why that's, I mean, I wasn't involved at that time, that's not for any other reason, I wasn't involved, but I had no idea why that was given. Um, and they, you know.
Could have been a wing of offence.
The longevity of, of, you know, like four people, if you had four people got it now, it could be thirty, forty years.
Exactly.
Get it, um, you know, it's like, you know, especially, you know, it, it's there, it's permanent, so you, you could get it at the age of sixty, thirty years, you could still have it, you know.
We don't give it to any young people then.
No, absolutely not.
We did talk years ago about giving Mac freedom of the town.
Yes.
Yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't really be talking about individuals because it's public.
But it, I mean, that was that never happened.
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, within this report, I've suggested that the, the chair, the mayor and myself to jointly determine the most appropriate category of honour for each nomination. Um, and it could be something that alternatively, like, it, it could be a little bit like the, the grant scrutiny panel, that it, that it is much more formalised, or it could be something that you think actually in the the, the um in, 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 sorry, I can't think of the, the wording. Um, the people that we've nominated to be mayor and chair were happy for it to be part of their, their annual act of judgement.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I would also like to suggest that we do it once a year. At the council meeting before the town meeting.
Yeah.
Hmm, good idea. Can be announced there, good. Could be announced, yeah.
Yeah.
Chair, just a comment on the, the whole situation, it was a, a light tradition. And I think Richard Stars, we sat on the table and decided that hadn't been issued for sixty-five years. Whoever got the, the award is just bringing it back to life. There's an award out there and should be given to the people that deserve it. Whoever got it, they've got it, but there's sixty-five years since the last person, and that was Ralph Holt. A long time, isn't it?
Well, the last one.
You can, that was the mayor's award, the King's Award or Ransgate Society.
The last one was the Owen Allyn.
Yeah.
And before that, it was Ralph.
She voted against it, councillor Sean.
When was that?
I wasn't against them, uh, councillor Albert, I just felt I'd been on about this since, until August twenty-one, by three, three and twenty-four. Thank you.
Right, so where are we?
May I say the nomination window is going to close quite shortly for the King's Honours.
Yeah.
I think it's the, at the end of this month.
End of month, thirty first, it's thirty, yes.
If you wanted to make nominations this year.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's not some, that's not something that can wait till the hour, annual meeting of the, um our meeting in April.
Oh.
Yeah. That's true.
So you're going to put the, the, the what we call our internal ones.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So is that agreed?
Agreed.
Yes.
Agreed, well done.
Great.
Now, where are we? Item eight, annual tree inspection report. To receive and note the annual tree inspection report by Invicta Barbara Culture. Quotes are now being sought for by tree surgeon to undertake the recommendations contained therein or actions by the technicians where appropriate. Town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. Um, one of the technicians ha- uh, does now have um chainsaw training. Um, and so it, there is certain qu- uh works within these reports that are being undertaken by the technicians. What can't be undertaken by the technicians, a quote is being sought from a, a tree surgeon to undertake.
And what do you want from this committee?
Uh, so this is to, to uh note the report. And it's being aware that this is in hand.
I mean, you know, okay, because they it'll depend on costs, I guess, eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Councillor.
I, I just think it's, uh it's a very well done report.
Yep.
Um, it's clear and concise of what needs, what needs to be done. Um, and uh, it's something probably we overlook in relation to, in relation to some of that with especially the, the, um, Tony Fiori.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, great.
Yeah, I, I think we need to look after our trees.
Absolutely.
Yeah, very good.
So is this just a notice, Chair?
I think it's just a notice. Even note that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty.
And then the, the last item is Kent Pension Fund. Funding strategy statement consultation. Town clerk.
Thank you. Um, so there are five proposed changes by Kent Pension Fund. Uh, the first of which council has already um considered recently, and this is together with town and parish councils. Um, so there is already um a recent uh resolution by the council in this respect, and that was that we prefer not to because the people that we're being pooled with all make higher contributions to the, the pension scheme than we do. Uh, the second matter regarding um academies and further education employees treated as equal risk to local authorities. Uh, this means that academies and colleges will now be seen as having the same level of financial stability as councils. Their deficit recovery period will be set at eight years. Uh, while this mainly affects schools and colleges, it signals how the fund is standardising the risk and repayment rules. RTC could see pressure in the future if similar rules are applied more wi- widely to town and parish councils. Uh, provision of an updated prudence adjustment for employers terminating under full cessation scenario. What this means is that if an employer were ever to leave the pension scheme, the exit bill they'd need to pay has been recalculated. And this is where part of going into the scheme is you can't just leave without there being repercussions.
Yeah.
Uh, if we were to leave the scheme, there would be a figure to, to buy out of the scheme, and I, I do know it would be in six figures.
Yeah.
We'll push to do that.
Um. If RTC ever considered outsourcing or restructuring in a way that ended their, our, our local government's participation, the cost of leaving could be higher or more strictly applied than before. And it would have been high and strict to begin with, but it's being tied up even more so. Uh, the next one, updated structure and subheadings. Uh, this is intended to make it easier for councillors and officers to actually understand the fund's strategy and how it affects their contributions and responsibilities. And then inclusion of an engagement plan and other considerations. There's now a formal plan for how the fund will communicate and engage with employers and new elements for national guidance built in.
Um, this is the pension fund for our staff.
Yes.
Have we consulted our staff? And should we consult our staff?
Yeah, we can do.
Yeah, I, I, I would have thought, although I'm part of this, I'm, I'm in this pension scheme. I haven't been as an individual on pensions about the challenges.
You what, sorry?
I haven't been.
No.
So I, I doubt very much whether the staff have been either, our staff have been either. Um, not saying that I'm worth anything, but I'm just saying that as an individual in it, I've been privy to it, so the likelihood is they might have been privy to it. My, my concern um with this is in, in ga- in relation to what we've already decided on the pooling of that, that we don't want to be part, part of that. Um, so I take it we've had no response on that?
Um, other than to acknowledge.
Acknowledge, we see, and it's going to be part of the, yeah, which they're going to put in anyway, and they're going to that's the way that they'll do that at KCC.
If we opt out of pooling, does that mean that we don't take part in the others'?
No, I think pooling is going to be the decision is made, we're all in.
Yeah.
And I think for the majority of councils involved, there's the um they could see a reduction in their contributions. So I, I expect it to be popular with other councils.
Yeah.
And the other what have we been asked to do?
Um, so is there any, any comments that you'd like to make uh to Kent Pension Fund? Uh, we, we have already commented recently about pooling. Any other comments that you'd like to make in respect to these plan changes?
On the last bullet point, it says inclusion of engagement plan and other considerations. Um, is there an annual review? Um, are you engaged as part of that engagement plan with councils and members that, especially Gary, if they're making changes, I think initially, at least for one or two years, they should have an annual review where they can receive feedback on any changes. Probably won't get it, but.
Yeah, I, I think, um you know, I, I really don't know what the enga- what the engagement plan is and what it, and what it's going to do, because I haven't looked, I haven't.
Well, look, it was the initial consultation.
Just so, just the initial consultation, that's the.
Go to members, you know, which I think it needs, and also wording going forwards from the little bits that I've read, it's quite technical. And this is for people that are paying into this pension. And I think they should be mindful of avoiding too much technical language. So it is absolutely understandable and people can make informed decisions.
Absolutely.
I'm not understanding that.
Plain English, can I please put it in plain English?
Chair, can I just, I'm not privy to what's going on, but I know there's a lot of work going on at KCC, believe it or not. And pensions is at the top of this because it affects so many people. As soon as the white paper comes out, not what people here all made up. I'm sure that most councilmen have got to hear.
Chair, I've just come back on that, it's, I'd say I have no faith in the leader of um Kent County Council in not wishing to raid the pension fund.
Well, lots of other people done that, that's why we got voted in, so that's a.
Well, that, that.
You can't defend yourself here.
Just say my, what I want to say, councillor, you can say what you want to say.
I normally do.
Like you, councillor, I'm a member of this pension fund, I like, I know.
So have I. I've not heard anything either. As a recipient from the KCC fund.
Um.
That's a little bit in the dark, really.
What should I have prepared?
Good show, we've done not anything.
Um, so I think we've got, um.
Well, let me ask a question. Would our decision about any of these points affect our staff? Because if they, if they do, then I think we should consult.
Probably not.
I think, um, one point that's been raised is anything that can be done to make actually the communication and the language easier for the employer and the employer.
Yes, absolutely.
Um, because I think, I suppose the employees, uh, uh, including myself, you'd, you'd look at the, you'd look at it and you think, I don't really understand.
Absolutely. It's very off putting.
Yeah.
Your interpretation of what's been said, isn't it?
Yes, they use plain English, they're English, yeah. It is pretty technical what I read.
Are we content then for that to be our response to the question?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of points there which you can't argue with anyway. And that prudence and, and notification. So I think that's, that's quite positive. So I would just go with that.
Second, and then all those in favour. That's carried. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Date and time of next meeting, Wednesday, the fourteenth of January, next year.
Seems a long time.
Yeah, well.